I'd like to call the Malmel City Council meeting to order. The first order of business, invocation and pledge of allegiance. I ask that you all please rise. Alderman Anderson is going to lead us.
Dear heavenly God, thank you for bringing us all together to do this fine city's work. Please guide, guard, and direct us as we do this, and we do it in your honor. Please be with the men and women and families that are protecting our freedoms for all of us in this beautiful United States. I pray all these things in your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item under special guests and announcements, we have a land donation proposal for a possible new city hall location, and we have several gentlemen here with us tonight. We have Mr. Jeff Hathaway, Mr. Gene Pfeifer, the property owner. We have Mr. Gene Levy with Cromwell and Mr. Eric Holloway with the Holloway Firm. And so, I think Jeff's going to lead the discussion, and maybe a team effort here, but we'll start with Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you very much, Mayor. For the record, my name is Jeff Hathaway. I'm with CBC Hathaway Group. I'm actually a resident of Little Rock, but I'm a very frequent visitor to Malmel. Proud member of the Malmel Chamber of Commerce, and one of the things I always notice on my frequent visits here is your sense of community and the pride that all the Malmel residents have in their city, and that brings us to our reason for being here tonight. I'm a real estate broker and advisor, and in that capacity, I represent Mr. Eugene M. Pfeifer III on a number of his properties, including about 26 acres that's located in Malmel, just northeast of Malmel Boulevard and Commerce Drive. It technically operates under the name Malmel Commercial Park. So, Mayor Watson and council members, I am here tonight to officially announce to the City Council of Malmel, Mr. Pfeifer's offer to donate over six acres of land at that location for Malmel to use as a location for a new city hall. As you probably know, Mr. Pfeifer's donation is on record via a September 23 letter to Mayor Watson less than two weeks ago. Tonight, I just want to briefly overview that offer and why we think it's so important and so exciting, and then I'm going to open it up for any questions that you may have from the council. If you have any questions about the land or the concept plan that we've designed with me tonight are Eric Holloway of Holloway Engineering here in Malmel and Gene Levy of Cromwell, a Little Rock architectural and engineering firm that's been making things happen in this state for a few years since about 1885.
Okay. Was everybody able to at least hear me? Small room. And if you have questions of the landowner, we're also joined tonight by Gene Pfeifer. We've specifically identified a 6.09 acre tract of land, including almost the entire prime Malmel Boulevard frontage that we have, that Mr. Pfeifer will give to the city. As envisioned, at this time, the site would have access from the Boulevard as well as from two points on Commercial Park Drive, and it would allow for the development of a brand-new, first-class city hall building with appropriate expansion space and ample parking while still leaving room for green space amenities such as a city park with a small pond. While you would be able, of course, to design your own city hall, in order to help showcase what an opportunity this could be, Gene Levy, working with Eric, has come up with a conceptual design for a two-story, 24,000 square foot, highly visible building with a reflecting pond and a fountain, which, in short, could be a true centerpiece for the city of Malmel. I'm going to let Gene Levy in a moment talk to you a little bit more and answer any questions that you have about the concept and why we've come up with what we have in terms of how the property could be utilized to the city's advantage. But I want to overview by telling you that we think there are several key reasons that we believe this represents such a great opportunity for the city. First is something that I think of as a sense of place. You know, some small towns have lost the vitality of a downtown or a kind of a courthouse-square effect, and they've had that replaced by just what's going on at the mall or at the local Walmart. Doing this with this property would allow you to buck that trend and create a classic city hall to anchor the public spaces of the city. Another reason is what I would call a centerpiece effect. If you start with a blank slate, which you would be able to do with this property, in a virgin location where you can plan the site and the building and its surroundings, you can create the kind of city hall that will last and that citizens will really be proud of. Another thing is community vision. I think that this is a chance for the city leadership to create something that future generations that live in Malmel will be very, very proud of. More specifically, visibility and access is another reason. All citizens and visitors to the city will be able to easily see this city hall, be easily able to get to this city hall. This increases civic pride. Very few, if any, cities have such an identifiable roadway going through the middle of town that's actually bears the name of the town itself and is used as a reference point for any activity or any directions that are given in the city. There's no such thing as a Little Rock Boulevard. There's no such thing as a Conway Boulevard, but there is a Malmel Boulevard, and that's very unique, and to have your city hall located on that roadway only makes sense. Efficiency, obviously, this would give you a chance to consolidate all city departments and functions in an efficient layout and to have a more appropriate meeting space for public meetings, for official meetings that could also be offered to the community for other uses as well if you chose to. Another reason is tax revenue. This municipal development would open up the surrounding land for new private development, much of which would be dedicated to retailers generating new sales tax revenue. I know that's very important to the city. City beautification is another reason. Malmel's already known for having great green space effect and for having good parks. This would give you an opportunity to put a stamp of emphasis on that by having a park and a small pond adjacent to the building that your citizens would identify as the city's building. And finally, the price is right, and getting free land is always good. And this is a pure donation. It's not any kind of a swap. The estimated value of the land in question is somewhere between $800,000 and $1 million. Mr. Pfeifer would be taking a big step in giving this land to the city, and of course, he can't do so without knowing that a city hall would soon follow. Therefore, the donation would be conditioned upon the city designing and starting construction on the city hall within three years after receiving the land. And we know there's no decision to be made on this tonight, but we feel strongly enough about what a great opportunity this is for the city that we just wanted to be here and come before you and tell you about the offer that's on the table for the city. Before I ask Mr. Levy to sort of go over the concept plan that we've got, are there any que-- if you have any questions for me or for Eric or Gene Levy or for Mr. Pfeifer, we're all here, welcome to answer any questions.
I do have one quick question. Do you have a suspense date on when we can make and return some decision on this?
Well, we haven't talked in terms of a date, but we know that there's a process underway that we can't change. We know there's-- if we understand correctly, there are decisions that the city is going to make probably that would come sometime after this year's elections, after there's a determination made about the bond issue. And so, we know that we're waiting on that, and Mr. Pfeifer may want to speak to that. We're not extending this into the eternity, but we want to work with the city's decision-making process and be happy to do so.
Thank you.
Yeah, the bond election for funds available for a city hall would occur on November the 4th, so I don't think a decision could be made to even know if there was funds available till after that day for a city hall. Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has there been any thought of or has it entered into the process of what-- any ideas of what we might do with the area that we'll be vacating if we do decide to move city hall? You know, that's going to change the area that we're currently housing right now. So, I just was curious if you had any kind of thought in that process, or was it all kind of in the designing of the new area?
Well, the proposal that we're here to talk about is about the new area, but in suggesting that it be a good idea for the city, we did give some thought to whether that was going to be a negative or a detriment to this area, and this is, of course, just opinion-only, but I really thought a lot about it and did some extra time kind of drive a couple months ago, a few weeks ago, driving around this immediate area and thinking about what you have here as a base of activity right where-- and this is my personal opinion, but it seems to me like you have a very strong, well-grounded, broad, educational, civic, recreational, and private business base in this area that the departure of city hall from this area, to me, would not be a serious detriment to it. It looks to me like you've got-- and when you look at the library and the schools that are here, public and private, the charter school and so forth, and the churches, it looks to me like there's a strong base that's going to be here whether city hall is here to not-- is here or not. And I also, I'm in the commercial real estate business. I'm in the business of repurposing facilities on a regular basis, and I feel confident that there is a user for this property.
Perfect. That's exactly what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Alderman Ho?
The bond issue that we have that will be on the ballot in November, it's for renovation of city hall?
It is for renovation or construction of city hall.
Or construction. So, that was my question. Would we be able to use that?
You would be able to use it now. There's only $2.7 million, so that was kind of calculated to renovate this building in place, so there might be additional funds needed if you construct a larger facility at a different location.
And I'm assuming there are no numbers available right now for the construction of the new facility?
Well, Mr. Levy may touch on that, but I believe in the discussion we had, it's about $200 a square foot is what it would be, so that's $4.8 million if you say it's 24,000 square feet. And not-- and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the number that I remember when we had the discussion. Now, that's also if you built it out completely. You could do phase construction too. Maybe you don't finish out some of the space or something like that.
And then they're also asking that we build the road. Is that correct? And that would be in addition to the 4.8?
I'm not sure of that. They are asking that the road be built. I'm not sure if the $200 included that roadway or not, but--
And then one other question. The entrance and exit, would we be able to have a curb cut?
If the city council approved it--
But it--
In the highway department.
Then I would be making that decision.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. In the highway department. It would require approvals by the highway department and the city council. That is correct.
Under our current ordinances or whatever, it would be too close. Isn't that correct?
Well, it also wouldn't be a collector's street either, so it'd be a variance of the access management plan. It would require some additional approvals. That's correct.
Okay. That's it.
Alderman Johnson?
One of the things I noticed and I realized that we had it, but if you look at the drawing in the north, the top of the left-hand corner, I believe there's another piece of property that belongs to the city right there.
That's correct.
And maybe it could be incorporated into something nice for this area too. And I, if I'm not sure and going back in memory, I think Mr. Pfeifer might have given us that property somewhere in the past.
He did.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm very receptive and open to this proposal. I think it fits into what a lot of us have been envisioning over the years, kind of a city square, city center, someplace where perhaps even we could have events and things like that, little community get-togethers or whatever, surrounded by retail area where maybe people could buy things and come on in or whatever, but I find it very intriguing. I appreciate you all coming up with this idea. I'm happy to give it a careful study. Thank you.
Of course, that's what we're really hoping that the council will do, is take this into your thinking and give it some consideration. And of course, the other thing that I touched on is that the specifics, I think this would be obvious, but I just want to state, the specifics of how the property would be developed and designed and what exactly would be built on it, I'm sure that there's a lot to be determined by the city in the future about that, but we've already, in fact, what Gene can show you is that we've already had kind of a second version, the first version and then the second version, where the proposed building would be moved a little bit further north, kind of change the way that the roadways internally would work and give a little bit higher elevation and more visibility to the building. So, there's a lot of tweaks that could be accomplished over time if you decide to use this property. Would it be okay to have-- would you like to look at a couple? Let Gene just kind of overview the two concept plans?
It'd be fun.
Okay. Can we do that?
I want everybody to know that even though my firm, Cromwell Firm, was founded in 1885, that I was not there then, even though I may look like it. Yeah. Why don't we-- well, you've got it, yes. You've got it oriented just like the slide up there. You want to use this pointer and I'll-- It's going to be hard enough for me to talk, so, yeah. Let's orient everybody to the site. You've got Commerce Drive on-- well, Malmel Boulevard, that's-- that street exists, and of course, Malmel Boulevard is the north-south street there and Main Street, and then you have the Commerce-- is that called Commerce Drive? Yes. Those are the major streets that surround this property, and so, when we began to study it, we said to ourselves, what we need to do is to make-- is to set aside this part of this property along Malmel Boulevard so that all of the city hall property is facing Malmel Boulevard, so that everybody will be able to see the building. And we have set it way back, and we've got landscaping in front of it because access and visibility is so important for this to be successful. And the next thing is to make it real easy for the public to get to it. So, this proposal shows a one-way drive in and a one-way drive out, and in the middle of that driveway is a reflecting pond, and then at the end of it, you have the city hall. And we envisioned the city hall as a two-story building, can be whatever you want, of course, and we've made it 24,000 square feet so that you have enough unfinished space for future And all of you know what you want to put in it and what city halls do, so we feel like the 24,000 square feet will probably give you enough as a start for your city, and there will be sufficient space for expansion in there. Now, the next thing is to make it really attractive, and we do that by having landscape and all the green area in front of the building and along Malmel Boulevard, so that if you're driving on Malmel Boulevard, coming from either the north or the south, you will see city hall immediately. You can also access the property from the intersection which, no, Malmel Boulevard and Commerce. That intersection already exists, so that you can come into that if you're southbound or northbound and drive around and come around, and then you come to what we call the front of the building, which is showing the front, yeah, right there. That's the front of city hall, and it's at the end of a Boulevard that we've named city hall dri-- what do we call it? City hall?
City hall drive.
Drive, yeah. Whatever you want. So, the building has both a front and a back. It's got the-- my wife is calling me. What do you do? Please, she knows I'm here. I'm not going to answer it. Now, we have to have adequate parking. You've seen the parking lot tonight, and here's the crowd, so we've arranged to have about 130 parking places around it, and includes a parking lot on the south of the building, which people can use to access the little park, which we created along the south side. That's a little public park, and it has a pond in it, which will be the retention basin for all of this property, and it'll handle the runoff. Now, we get to, why is Gene Pfeifer doing this? Well, if he does-- if the city hall is built there and it's at the major intersection of that Boulevard, then it will be an attraction for people to come and shop and have offices and restaurants in the area to the east. So, he develops an entire commercial area that is centered around city park, I mean, city hall. Now, that's important to everybody because that is an area that currently is not developed at all, and if it-- if you have shops and you have commercial development and offices, then all of a sudden, your tax revenue is going to go up, and that will help the city. It will help everyone. So, have I forgotten anything? Now, we've got another plan. It was brought up that, hey, you know, there's lots of different ways to develop this property, these six acres, and here's another idea. We move the building to the north so that it's next to Commerce Drive, it's still totally visible, and we put all the parking off to the south of it. And the interesting thing is that with the city mall drive, we take it all the way through so that when you come off of Malmel Boulevard, if you decide to go on that street, you can get right into everything. The building still has its reflecting pond on the west side, so that it has a majesty and it has an importance, it gives it an importance as a focal point for everybody because that's what city hall should be. It's supposed to be like the courthouse in a town. First, the courthouse is built, and then everything centers around that courthouse. Well, this is Malmel's courthouse building, and we hope that by developing it this way that the citizens will all have greater pride in their city and that they will have easy access to all of the city services. Well, that's what architects do. We just dream.
Any questions?
I can answer any questions if you'd like. I'm sorry I had my back to you, but--
That's quite all right. I could hear--
But you had the best view.
I probably did.
It's right in the back of my head. Okay. Well, if there are no questions or-- Well--
You got to come to the microphone, Mr. Bersuter, if you're going to speak. Please state your name and address for the record again, please.
My name is Donald Bersuter. I live at 106 Harmony Loop up on Hill Hill, and my concern here is we have two ways, one way in and one way out of-- I'm not getting concerned in the third exit, the third entry. That's another situation. But what I see is anybody leaving work at this time of the day or late in the evening has to go south on Malmel Boulevard. They're going to leave, they're not going to come out the Commerce Street and come around. They're going to try to leave through city hall avenue there. There is no crossover of the avenue on Malmel Boulevard there, right?
Or is it Commerce?
Closer to you.
At Commerce.
No, I'm talking about from--
If you leave here and you want to go south, you have to come down here. Can you make a U-turn here to go this direction?
No, but you could come out this way and come around this way, or you come down here. Here you'd have a light to help you turn left, and here you have a left turn lane. So, you have two ways to get southbound. You would not come out here. One of these other routes to get southbound. That's why this plan has this road and this road connecting to Commercial Park Drive, which is already built. Commercial Park Drive is already in, so you would use this intersection or this intersection to get southbound from any of this property.
Come out here or down here to go south. It just looks like a bottleneck to me.
That's a very good question that you asked, and the gray changes at the end of city mall drive prevent having an interchange that will allow you to go southbound because the southbound lane is elevated so much above the northbound at that point that you can't do it.
Because of the leg on the other side.
Yes, and your question is very apropos, but it's solved. It's solved because there are two ways out for southbound traffic.
Alderman Johnson?
Just like to make one statement for you gentlemen, leave and everything. Mr. Pfeifer, I really do appreciate what you're doing for Malmel and trying to move us forward, and just thank you a million.
Let me just say, it would be mutually beneficial. It isn't simply good for Malmel.
I know that, yes.
It would be good for me as well.
Good. That's the best kind of deal.
Sometimes the best--
It went winner, winner.
--is made when that's the case, yes.
Absolutely.
I think that there, I heard in your package you had the copy of the letter and the exhibits. Is that right?
Yes.
Correct. We have 11 by 17 drawings in color of these two site plans, I think. If that would be helpful for us to leave those with anybody, we'd be glad to do it, would it? Okay. Jim? You have a lot to do, and we appreciate you letting us take the time at the start of your meeting. Thank you very much. We appreciate the proposal, and hopefully, if things go well on November the 4th, then the council might be able to take this under consideration. We do have, I do have one comment card that y'all might want to stick around and listen to that wanted to talk about location of city hall also. Mr. Jerry Poole?
My name is Jerry Poole. I've lived in Malmel since 1986, and I'm also the majority owner of Lakeview Place Building that was built as the showplace of Malmel, and it actually was the first courthouse in Malmel. The city used it before I owned it for a-- The city used it before I owned it for a short time as a courthouse. Now, I, I'm not trying to create a controversy, but I'm certain I am, because right now, I talked to the mayor less than two weeks ago, made a proposal to him, brought an architect to City Hall, and that architect agreed to give his time to help to relocate City Hall to Lakeview Place.
That's not correct, Mr. Poole. That, it, it was been over two weeks ago, but your architect made a proposal to renovate the building into an office project, is what I remember, a fifty thousand square foot office project. Is that not correct?
He made a proposal for the city to move City Hall to Lakeview Place, and he agreed to offer his, uh, architectural services to make that happen, and at that time...
That's not correct.
You and I had a discussion, and you said you couldn't use over fourteen thousand square feet.
Uh, that's what I said my current building was.
And that's what you said your current building was, there were no funds to be able to do anything like that. Now, rather than try to create a controversy with you and I, I want to make sure that everybody understands, we went through the same deal with the library, Mr. Pfeiffer offered land to put the library over there, and the city chose that, that would be too far away, and put it into a position where it wouldn't work for the library, and I do not believe it'll work for City Hall. Not that I don't admire Mr. Pfeiffer for being in a financial position to do what he's doing, but we have a fifty thousand square foot building that is within eye view of this, and everybody that comes down the boulevard sees that building. Now, I'm just throwing my hat into the ring, that why would we wanna go over and spend the money that it would take to develop that property for Mr. Pfeiffer? It hasn't sold in fifteen years, it's not gonna turn into a retail development, and so we would be hitting our heads against the wall to do that. Now, when you talk about two hundred dollars a square foot to do that, you know, we're going into debt beyond belief. My, we have three proposals now on the table. One to renovate City Hall, spend that much money, one to look at Lakeview Place as to moving City Hall to Lakeview Place, and the city acquired with the ability to grow and increase if you need to. You got parking spaces, over a hundred parking spaces there, and then third, we have Mr. Pfeiffer's proposal, okay? And all I can say is that we were told there was no plans to move City Hall. And then to read it in the paper this morning, that just out of the clear blue sky, this all happened, you know, I have my doubts, Mayor, that that's, that's, that's where we are. And, you know, if we're not gonna put everybody on a level playing field, then we don't need to be doing that and spending that kinda money, because by the time we build the land up, I mean, I, I don't know how many of you have been over and looked at that land, and seen what it looks like over there, there's a reason it hasn't developed. A very clear reason, because the land construction, the driveway construction will be out of this world, cost-wise. I looked at the land, okay? So, all I wanna do is to say, if we've got something that is exactly what we're looking for, that is already built, that an architect looked at and said would be absolutely perfect for what we're looking for, then why would we go and do something like this?
Did, in our meeting with Mr. Miller, did he not mention investors in Memphis that he was going to, to, to sell the building to them?
Only to the extent of after you said you didn't have any reason whatsoever to move City Hall.
No, it, that's, that's not the way the conversation went, but it, but we, we were talking about two million dollars for the building, correct?
Two point six.
Right, for purchase of the building.
The purchase of the building.
Yes, sir. And then renovation on top of that.
And it's already renovated. It's already in a position, it's office-based meeting rooms, it's half a third of what you're gonna be spending to do something else with. And, you know, you gotta understand, I've been in Mammell as long as anybody I believe has been in the room, and all I care about is that we do what is best for everybody in Mammell, and for everybody in Mammell is to use our tax dollars, because as I reminded you, Mayor, we've had this discussion about the streets around the building.
Yes, sir.
And for twenty years, I've been promised that we were gonna get that taken care, we were gonna get that taken care of, and then all of a sudden, you, you know, we're in a position that we're gonna go spend a fortune to put a new City Hall over there. And then you said yourself, that if you moved City Hall, you was afraid what it was going to do to this area.
And I expressed that to these gentlemen also.
Right. I, I concur with you in that regard. That building was built for, to be the centerpiece of Mammell, when it originally was built. And so, all I can say is, if anybody has any questions they wanna ask me, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
Alderman Ho?
I have a question for you, Mayor.
Okay.
That is a fifty thousand square foot building.
Not currently.
Okay.
No.
Here's my point. Isn't it true that we're not able to rent out any space? We can't have anybody in this building that's not city-connected? So, could we rent out space in that building? Were we to buy it, or would we buy, be buying a...
It's... If bond monies were used for it, you could not use it for private space.
So, that in itself would absolutely be a, a game killer to me. We could not use that building. There's way too much building there, and it would have to sit there vacant.
Any other questions?
May I add some questions?
You're gonna have to come to the podium, Ms. Cochran.
Okay, so if his building has too much space on it, I mean, why not be ahead of the game on being prepared for what's gonna come in the future? Be, you know, if we're building, you know, a City Hall, and allowing to do it in phases for growth on it, and if the building is there already, and in my opinion, needs to be remodeled, you know, done upon, but like two million, four million dollars, um, you know, with, but I mean, if, if it's right here, and that was what it was originally built for, I don't understand why we're not, you know, considering using it for it to be cheaper.
Well, he, Mr. Poole stated the cost of the building was two point six million dollars, I believe is what he just said. It also would require renovation. He says it's fully renovated, but Mr. Miller mentioned there would have to be things done to the building, is that not correct, Mr. Poole?
Certainly, if you wanna do something different, but paint, uh, the likes of that don't involve spending two hundred dollars a foot to build a City Hall.
I understand that, I understand that. But there, there would be renovation involved to make it into offices for City Hall, such as a council room and things like that, correct?
That probably would be true.
Yes, sir. Okay.
And we haven't said we're going to.
Yeah.
We didn't either, we listened to the proposal.
I understand, the correct figures are, there's thirty-six thousand of heated and cooled space in the building. There's fourteen thousand square feet of balconies that are not heated and cooled. Mr. Miller stated that those fourteen thousand square feet of balconies could be covered to be used as space later on. That was what his presentation was about, from that standpoint, but, uh, you know, if we're looking at twenty-four thousand, what's wrong with having thirty-six thousand, that you only use fourteen thousand of, at a price that you can afford, rather than go and spend a bunch of money on something that, you know, will be a money pit for the city?
Well, I, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
I would suggest that if you're really interested in the city looking at your proposal, that you submit something and bring an architect, and, and let us look at it.
I will do that.
Because we're not making any decisions right now.
I will.
And there's one other thing I want to ask about that building. I remember a few years ago, you had apartments upstairs?
There are condos upstairs.
Okay, and there were people that came to this council and were absolutely in tears because of the condition of the plumbing and the sewers, they said it was running down the walls. Has that been corrected?
Everything has been corrected. There were not any problems. We had some dissident owners that, uh, decided to sell their condos, and I bought those condos back, and there are people living in them, and the building is doing probably better than it ever has been. It has a brand-new roof on it, and I just renovated the bottom two floors, as far as painting and, uh, changing some things, but it has space. As a matter of fact, that space that used to be the courtroom has over, uh, three thousand, four thousand square feet of space, uh, in it, that is one large room, where the courtroom was before.
Alderman Moose?
One question I've got, it can be brief, and the answer is, uh, to, and thank you, Mr. Poole, for, uh, your comments as well, is to, uh, Mr. Hathaway and Mr. Pfeiffer's group. This is just for the sake of seeing if there's any flexibility here. Is it, does it absolutely have to be the executive offices of City Hall of the City of Mammell? Because the reason I ask that is, you know, we do have conversations about where we're going to play city courts potentially, we've got conversations out there about a new senior wellness center. Is this a City Hall or bust offer? Or are there other possibilities of municipal buildings which could satisfy the vision in which you have? An answer is not required now, but it's just something to, something to ponder.
Well, I would like to enter into a negotiation with the city to do something...
Okay.
... of a civic nature there.
Okay.
It, it, it depend upon the use...
Absolutely.
Whether it be an outright donation, or, uh, possibly a sale at a, at a burden of the city, to use that to really enhance the value of the rest of the property. So, somewhere between a full donation, or selling it, there may be some in-between, depending upon the use.
Okay.
But, but I'd be interested in having a negotiation with this community to do something. And, and Mr. Poole said, uh, this is the first time, uh, that I've been here with this. It started with the library, and the city initiated that. The city, the city came to me at that time and said, "May we hire an architect to, to study your land, and to help you come up with a proposal, uh, to present for the library?" And you folks paid the, excuse the expression, an L. Purefoy firm, and, and come in and, and study the land, and we didn't do just the library, we, we did a library, and a City Hall, and, uh, a, a community center, a number of different uses. We presented a proposal that had a, a, a schedule of taking down the first piece of land for the library, and a few years later, taking down some more land for another, uh, we wrote a proposal that, that scheduled moving a number of your municipal facilities into the entire twenty-six acres. And it's my recollection, Alderman Burks, you may correct me, I, I'm not certain on it, I, I believe it was the initial decision of your predecessors on the board to accept my offer. And at that meeting, Bobby Roberts, head of Central Arkansas Library, uh, stood up and said, "I don't like this site, and if you, if you determine to take this site, we will not build our library in Mammell." And the City of Mammell rescinded its decision to take up my offer, and took up the other offering with the library where it now is. But, uh, that's, that's history. The, the, I have a hard time stopping myself. The part of in the, in the north, uh, northeast corner there, that acre that I gave you, that, that again, was not, uh, totally altruism, we worked out a deal, uh, I wanted the, the new curb cut that is at, at Commercial Park Drive, and the city cooperated with me, and getting the highway department to approve that curb cut, and part of that deal was that I gave you that acre.
Well, I, I, I think it's a very, uh, very positive answer, and it sounds like that there is, um, some room for further discussions, and as we've said, that we are, uh, open to, you know, looking at possibilities. That was part of, I think, a big theme of the discussion that we had, is we talked about these different bond projects, is how much do we wanna consolidate some city offices in certain places? Do we wanna put it in one place? Do we wanna spread it out? Um, you know, we kinda came out, I think, of those bond discussions a little bit mixed, for the most part. I mean, we came down to a four-to-four vote on the, uh, office renovation. And so, um, I think we've got a little thinking to do, but, uh, we certainly are optimistic about all parties that are interested in growing with the City of Mammell, and, uh, it's something I think we'll be discussing. Thank you.
Very happy to discuss it.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Poole.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for having me.
Next item on the agenda is the Corum Court Report. We have Justice of Peace Paul Ebbay with us tonight.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for letting me be here. Uh, first of all, I'd like to let everybody know, uh, Senior Center, Center Director, Ms. Nicole Heaps, was appointed to the Plasky County Verizon Arena Civic Center Board for five years, and I was a sponsor for that. And, uh, we are giving county employees approximately a four percent raise as of right now for next year, starting two fifteen, twenty fifteen. Also, we're putting new LD lights and cameras to the Big Down Bridge, because the original lights had gone, uh, going pretty dim. We wanted it to look like two rivers, weren't it be seen real good? Also, starting up the construction on the new Broadway Bridge will be approximately January or February of next year. Uh, the roadway is supposed to be only at their service for six months. And, uh, but it will take eighteen months to complete the whole bridge. But we're talking about going across the bridge, it's only supposed to be out for six months, and I hope it stands that way. And I think everybody else does, too. And I saw it happen that, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Justice Elliott. Next item is the approval of the minutes from the September fifteenth regular meeting. All the council members have a copy of those minutes in their packets, are there corrections or any additions? Alderman Mosley?
Uh, yeah, I think I saw one possible correction there, under ordinance eight sixty-two, amending compensation schedule. Says with no objections, Mayor call for the third reading, I think it would be the first.
It's on both of those, it's on eight sixty-two and eight sixty-three.
Was it? Okay.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes amended as Alderman Mosley's instructions.
Second.
Second. It's been motioned second that the council approved the minutes as amended for the September fifteenth meeting, as suggested by Alderman Mosley. Is there a discussion on that motion? Not all of them in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment, and I have several public comment cards here tonight. Uh, be happy to hear from you. The first one I have is from Ms. Karen Cochran. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Karen Cochran, and I've guarded notes code, and I thank you for letting me speak. I have come to see what we've done to keep me from flooding. It has been almost two months, and I know you've done something good.
We have cleaned all the brush in the ditch, we have removed rocks that were in the flow line of the ditch on the downstream side of the pipes that go onto the railroad. We've also cleaned them up on each end of the railroad overpass, there were some rocks that had rolled down from the, riprap that had rolled down from the sides, we cleaned all that up. And we, we've also had the engineers doing a backwater study to determine if something else needs to be done for that area. They decided that we, based on some preliminary numbers that I received this afternoon, we do need to add some pipes, additional pipes under the railroad track, to keep the flood elevation from getting up into the Gables Apartments. And they studied all the way up to Woodland Drive is how far they studied up the ditch, so that goes past your house, it goes all the way to the far end of the soccer fields, and it may be require even adding three ten-foot diameter pipes, there's currently three there, and it may require adding three more of those. There's currently three there, and it may require adding three more of those.
And how soon will that be done?
Well, this is just a study. I cannot tell you how soon that would be done. That's going to cost.
An idea. I understand. I understand all the other.
I can't give you that, Ms. Cochran, at this time.
Two weeks, two months, a year, five years? Just a general.
It's not going to be this year. I know that.
And why would that be?
Why would that be?
Why would that be?
Because one reason.
Why is it whenever people are, homes are being ruined, they're homeless, why is this? And this has been going on since three years ago. But my point is, this needs to be a 911. When it rains, I just have to get up, put my shoes on, look out the window. Am I going to have to call the fire department, call my son to pick up everything on the floor? It needs to be a priority. Supposedly, it was fixed in 2011.
We did, we removed a low-water bridge from below the tracks at that time that we thought solved the problem.
Well, obviously, there sounds like we've got a whole lot more going on with it, okay? So what I would like to know is if it's possible for me to receive what information, or whatever you want to call it, what steps were taken in 2011 in regard to our flooding issue? And I want to know what's going on now.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
And how will I know about getting that?
I can provide it to you at your address.
That will be good, because it does need to be a 911 situation.
Well, and there's other, the railroad is going to have to prove anything we do. They're going to have to.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying, mayor. And I'm not at all trying to be unkind. I mean, I just can't stress, I'm not by myself. It's a whole subdivision. You know, we're not getting taken care of. What is the position of an alderman? I mean, what are they supposed to do? I believe your mind, Garda Mox?
No.
I believe I'm your alderman.
What do y'all do for us? I mean, what's your?
Well, anytime you have a complaint, if you contact me, I see that it's taken care of. That doesn't mean that I can call the mayor and he can say.
Oh, I understand. I.
And, you know, among other things, we've got to figure, get whatever the information was for the study, that we would have to get their recommendations. It will have to come to the entire council, and there has to be enough money from somewhere to pay for it. And, you know, we don't have that money in the budget, so it would, I'm not saying we wouldn't approve the money, but we would have to know what it is and figure out what we're going to do.
Right.
I can guarantee you that I have been asking how you were doing, and I feel for you. But that's not the only place in town that we're having that problem. And I don't mean to sound cold or cruel, but part of that problem, the developer didn't do, he didn't do what he should have done.
But who signed off the developer? That it was okay what they did?
Well, I couldn't tell you who did that. It sure wasn't me.
It would be the city, isn't it?
It is the city that signs off, yes, based on a professional designer's opinion, yes. But they don't do the design for that project.
Oh, I understand that somebody does it, but the city still has to sign off, just like when I got my, last year, or it was last year, had the new highway ticket. Well, I just put my new highway ticket in, so the city guy came by and told me.
That it was all right to put it in.
And I got rejected.
And then also, like I said, I know that part of it is the homeowner's responsibility to find out, you know, we're all guilty of it. The realtor probably might have said, "Well, this, you know, everything's just fine here. I've been guilty of doing the same thing."
I don't know what the homeowner's supposed to do.
The homeowner has some responsibility to find out what, you know, whether or not you're in a floodplain.
Or not. I knew that. I'm not in a flood zone.
Then how would the city have known?
Until the overpass came in. See, and here's my issue, and why, you know, it may seem like I want it done just like this, but it's been three years. It's been three years, and you told me then that the engineer was in and what the game plan was going to be, and you're telling me now that that hadn't been done. And I don't mean to be unkind, but how do I know it's going to get done now?
Well, it's only going to get done if, as Alderman Hoag said, if the council puts the funds into it and it gets approved.
So these gentlemen that were here to put in a new city hall, that, a new city hall, there's nothing wrong with this building? Do you flood?
Yes, ma'am, we did. About a month ago, yeah, three weeks ago.
Gee, was that your first flood?
Uh, no, it's not.
I am a veteran.
No.
You know? And if it's $200 a square foot, my friend, look at the floods in here. Who can paint? Pull up some carp. We're here to help the city, and I want to know why the city's not here to help us also in Garda Mox subdivision had to go to seven on your side last month. What's with that? Did anybody see it?
I didn't.
That's with the alleyway.
Alleyways. Yes, ma'am.
Now, people are losing their value of their home, get sales, the frustration, and what is it? You've mentioned in here, and I printed this off on the air, that you had had several complaints over the years, but it's not the city's responsibility. But, Mr. Mayor, all of y'all with it, again, we're not trying to be difficult people. You know, we live out here, pay our taxes, everything that we're supposed to be doing. Okay, so maybe the flood issue's not the city. You know, maybe the homeowner should have done, could have done a little bit more, but if we work together, you know, if you help these people when their streets are being torn up, or alleyways, whatever they're called, before it got to the shape of demo, you know, that would have helped them. How would they have known that the city said, "Okay, well, we'll take this, this, and this, but we're not going to take the alleyways"? How did they know that?
Well, by getting a survey on their property when they move in, because it's not a public road. That alleyway is not a public right-of-way. It should be explained.
But what did you do to help those people when they first started complaining? Why did they have to go to seven on your?
They didn't come to me. They didn't come to me.
What, sir?
No, I talked to them several, I talked to people like seven or eight years ago on this problem, but not anybody recently.
Seven or eight years ago? And that happened today? Last month, go to seven?
Well, but it's private property. It's just like would, if this can.
But that's what I'm saying. Why didn't you help them seven?
How can I help them? What am I supposed to do for them? I mean, it's private property. It's just like your driveway. Should the city come and fix your private driveway that leads from the public road?
If you're not enough, the city's going to.
Okay, but, okay, let's take another driveway then. A private driveway, should the city repair a private driveway that goes from a city street to their garage?
No.
Okay? That's the same.
Right, but my point is, if we're all here to try to work together, you know, why did they have to drop such drastic measures? I hope I don't have to with it. And so whenever you say to get the survey, so when that overpass went in and we started having the flooding issues, are you saying I should have been up with the highway department over there, you know, with a hard hat on, checking them out?
I didn't say that.
And make some of those blueprints. You see what I'm saying? I'm trying to understand.
I can't answer your question as far as should you have been with the highway department. I mean, the highway department's saying they haven't caused the flooding. The hydraulic study didn't indicate that that caused the problem. Everybody says it all started when there, I think the coincidence is, is that's when we had a seven-and-a-half-inch rainfall in 2011. We had a six-inch rainfall in August of this year.
A six-inch in August?
Yes, ma'am. I believe it was. I've got the National Weather Service indication of that. Yes, ma'am. I'll get it to you.
That's all right. But I can get all this other information, and I mean, how do we go about finding out how long it's going to take to get this issue resolved? And I'd love to, you want to thank for going out and clearing out the, you know, those last miles, you guys went out and looked at it, two months or plus a year?
Yes, ma'am.
It looks a lot nicer out there.
Thank you.
So, but what is the process now? So do you already have your engineer information?
I don't have engineer, I have a preliminary study that they've done. Yes, ma'am, and I'll provide that to you, but there's a lot of design work that has to go along with that, more detailed studying to do to determine exactly how it can be done. Engineering plans have to be developed.
So we're looking years down the road?
I can't answer that question, Ms. Cochran. Not tonight.
So anything from 2011 to today? There was nothing done? Is that what we're saying?
There was not any engineering.
We're starting over?
No, ma'am, we're not starting over, but there's no, we're not any engineering plans done. Yes, ma'am.
All right. And you got my address?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
All right. And I'll be able to, but how do I keep up with this on a monthly, daily?
You can send me an email. Yes, ma'am.
All right. I want to thank you all again for speaking with us, you know, and like I said, I want to say one more thing. I would like to see all of Maumell share in good streets, good streetlights, no flooding, no washing away, rather than just have one damn city building. I mean, let's fix what we have and fix what else is out there. You know, let's get it all kind of polished up, not just this section of the town, or, you know, let's work on this thing also, you know, because we're falling apart and having to go to seven on your side. I mean, that's.
Nobody, nobody had to go to seven on your side.
They were on TV?
And that's their choice.
That was their choice. That's right.
But that's what I'm saying, because they couldn't get anything from the city.
But the city's hands are tied there, Ms. Cochran. I mean.
But that's what I'm saying. I mean, somebody had to have been able to, you know, someone signed off on these alleyways.
They signed off on them as private drives. That's what they were, they're private drives. They're in easement. They, you know, they're not the city's responsibility. I'm sorry, but that's.
I hope the railroad overpass, I hope that doesn't become, you know, part of my, you know, on it, where it's, you know, my responsibility to get that fixed up.
No, ma'am, it's not. City drainage. Yes, ma'am. Alderman Mosley?
I'll pass at this point. Thank you.
Alderman Mosley?
I'd just say, I think the advice that I would give to Ms. Cochran is there's a very excellent example that's seated on the opposite side of the room, and that was the tenacity of Ms. Laura Green. Sorry to highlight you there, but it could have easily been a similar situation on another part of town had we gotten that same amount of rainfall. And I think Ms. Green could testify to that. She's got pictures to prove some of the issues that she's had. Indeed, I think it's unfortunate that, you know, at this point, looking back on that flood, I wish I could say that, you know, maybe it was the small things, maybe it was the rocks, maybe it was the brush. But now, you know, we will go to the length of looking at engineering studies, and as to those alleyways, if you'd like to have a conversation with me about them, I would be interested in speaking with you about them. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I mean, that's all, I'm sure these homeowners are asking the same as what Garda Mox, oh, we're asking. Who neighbors lost their law boards? I spent $36,000 to clean my house back, and I'm on 90% there now. And this is my second flood. First time I have insurance. I mean, we just want the city to help. That's all we're asking.
And we're trying to help in this situation right here.
Three years, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
And it rains, I guarantee you, every other day, it rains my lawn.
Next card we have is from Mr. Bill Arnold.
I'll defer my comments for two weeks.
Okay. Next comment we have is from Mr. David Lee.
My name is David Lee, 14 Breezewood Cove. Denise Curtis, I own the house at 14 Breezewood Cove, and we're having an issue with the city water coming down. We have a creek behind the house that drains the city water into the river, and it's eroding away the property. I've lost about 12 feet of the yard to the ditch, to the city ditch. Mayor Watson has been out there to look at it. For some reason, he says that the city's not responsible for the erosion problem. There, I believe there's four drainage, storm drains that come down and put water into the creek. And I just kind of need some help on kind of getting my yard back. I'm currently under construction with fixing the problem back there. There's a guy right now working on it. I've spent between $15,000 and $20,000 on bringing dirt in, bringing shell in. Mr. Saunders has been by, and I'm not sure that he's actually seen the issue back there, but it's a pretty serious issue. I don't know what else to say, really, other than I need some help. I don't, really, I don't understand why if the city, if it's the city's water coming off the streets, coming down behind my house and eroding the yard away, I'm not really sure why the city's not responsible for the erosion problem, I guess.
Well, the backyard was filled at some point, correct, Mr. Lee?
Correct.
And so we, I mean, the city has an easement back there, and we're responsible for that easement that the ditch is within.
Right.
But if someone fills their yard, and it's a vertical bank or almost vertical bank, and it erodes off, the city didn't place that fill there.
Exactly. But it's the city's, it's the water coming off the streets that's eroding the dirt away. I mean, would you care if I blocked off this sewer drain to where no water comes back there and dammed that off? So that probably would occur again. I mean, is that okay to do?
No, sir, that's not okay.
Because why?
Because it would be impacting a drainage system that's in the city of Maumell.
That belongs to the city?
That's part of the drainage system. Yes, sir.
Okay, so is the city responsible for the drainage? I mean, are they responsible for the water that comes off the streets that's coming through there?
Yes.
Okay.
It's flowing off the street.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I know I prosecuted a contractor that I believe Ms. Curtis hired to place that fill in the city's easement, and it was wrongfully placed there. We required that it be removed. He couldn't do that, so it was left there. So I'm not, you know, I think that we do have a problem where the fill was placed in a situation it should not have been, and if you'll give me a call, I can certainly sit down and we pull that file from the prosecution. It's been several years ago, because the courts were actually holding court in the council chambers at that time. So if you'll give me a call, I get my numbers on the city website. We can talk about the problems that were created at that point, see how we can come to a solution of that.
I still don't see what that has to do with the city water coming through back there and eroding.
I'll be happy to walk through that issue with you.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I'm welcoming anybody up here to come look at the problem. I mean, if you had this problem in your backyard, I think you'd be concerned, too.
And we met with your contractor?
You did, yes.
Yes, that had a solution, I thought.
Yes.
But then he was going to get back with us with?
He's doing, I don't know, I wasn't, I wasn't part of the meeting. I wasn't invited to the meeting, but.
Well, you were, you were welcome to come. I mean, you're the one that asked me to meet with your contractor.
Right, right. He's in the process of doing the work right now.
Okay.
I didn't, as far as what him and you talked about, I'm not really sure. I mean, I don't know.
Well, he said he thought he could solve the problem, and that's kind of how we left the meeting, was he said he could solve the problem.
And I was present at that meeting as well, so again, I'll be happy to go over those things with you.
Okay. All right. Now, according to him, he can fix the hillside, but he says the water that's coming through the ditch is going to undermine, I mean, years down the road, he said it's going to undermine the hillside again, and it's going to continue to slide with water coming through there, is what he's saying. You don't understand that?
Well, I do, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but it was my understanding. He was talking about he was going to put rocks down there and build up on the rocks and stack them, and so.
Right, the rocks are only going to go so far, though. I mean, they're not going to go all the way down into the ditch where the water is. He's also building a wall, too.
I think his comment that it was, that it would probably begin eroding again in 30 years or so.
He may have.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're not going to worry about it until 30 years down the road?
I don't think that there's, I think it was his comment, there wasn't a permanent solution available at this point, that that was the most permanent solution that we could deal with at this point, and it was going to be an ongoing effort.
Okay. But the city still has no responsibility for that, is what you're saying, for the erosion problem?[1793.03]
I'll be happy to go over with you, for the natural flow of water, I'm not sure exactly what kind of responsibility that, that there would be. City, it's not directed onto your property, you place property in the easement.
No. What you're, what you're referring to is...
Mr. Lee, and I...
What you're referring to is an issue about four years ago, when a contractor come back there, and he did, he did put some dirt back there, and he got, I don't know, he got a, a yard or two of dirt in the ditch, which, which the city threw a fit about. But if the city is saying it's not their responsibility, I don't understand why, why y'all are worried about a yard or two yards full of dirt in the ditch. It, that's gone, that was four years ago, that dirt's, but, it's been gone.
Okay.
The rest of my yard's in the ditch now.
I'll be happy to talk with you about it, but the forum that we're in doesn't really lend itself to that, plus the fact that we don't have the documents in front of us.
Right.
But if you'll just give me a call, I'll be happy to sit down, we can talk through that.
Okay.
I have a question. Just something, I'm sorry, I didn't get that. Now, are you saying that the city's drainage that's coming into this area is washing your...
Right. It's the water coming off of the streets and, right.
So if that's the case, then why not reship our housing waters still? Or why not bring in rocks? I don't mean, I haven't seen the areas.
It's not the city's responsibility.
Yeah, I know. I don't think that's it.
The easement's in the, in our responsibility?
The easement portion is our responsibility, but if it's not in an easement, it's not our responsibility necessarily. There's an easement on the property, not an easement on the dirt.
Anything from the easement on is our responsibility.
Alderman Mosley?
Mr. Lee, uh, what's your address there? I live in your neighborhood, I'd, I'd at least like to come by and take a look at what you're contending with.
It's fourteen Breezewood Cove.
All right, and it's Mr. Lee, what was your first name?
David.
David, okay. Yeah, I'd like to perhaps come by and knock on your door some evening after work.
Okay, yeah, if anybody wants to come, come by and look at it, they can.
Thank you.
All right.
Alderman Lewis?
Do you wanna get the order of this, uh, straight, Mr. Lee? So this home was purchased somewhere around two thousand and ten, nine?
Uh, ten, not, not right, I think it was two thousand nine.
Okay, and so at that point, there was a contractor who came in and did some fill work.
About a year later.
Was there, okay, after you bought the home?
Right, right.
Was there at that point already a large reseeding? Cause you said there was, how many feet had been lost to this point?
Uh, ten or twelve feet.
At, was there at that point ten or twelve feet that already had receded into this ditch, or...
Not at that point.
Okay, so the filling was mainly for, what, some sink holes, something of that nature?
Right, right.
Okay, and so then from that point onward is when you saw more of the decline?
Right.
Okay, and it was just a gradual thing, or was there any one particular event that...
It was gradual.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, um, there was one event, a, a large, a large rain that, that took away quite a bit at one time, but, but it's, it's been a kind of a gradual thing.
Fourteen feet of the backyard, that is...
Well, and that drainage easement is in the flip, is in the flip lane.
On the easement, but what about...
Where the fill was placed, that's why it was, it was abolished.
No, I understand.
There was no flood development plan there, and there has to be a floodway development plan there.
I understand the nature of the prosecution, I was more concerned with the status of his yard, which is falling apart. Okay, thank you.
All right. That it?
Alderman Johnson?
Just a point, I have seen it, it is a mess, and be, like to see, uh, the two Aldermen over there. Steve, you go by there and look at it, it, it is a mess, and it's, I don't know what the answer is, but it's a mess.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Okay, if Mr. Arnold's gonna defer till two weeks from now, we'll move on. Next item is financial statement review, and that's done at the second meeting of each month. Next item is procedural motion, and we need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only.
So move.
Second.
It's been motioned, second that the council read all resolution and ordinances by title only, is there any discussion on that motion? No, roll call, or, I'm sorry, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Moving on to unfinished business, we have the second reading ordinance number eight sixty-two amending a compensation schedule. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
An ordinance of the city council, the city of Malmell, Plaski County, Arkansas, ordinance number eight sixty-two, an ordinance amending the compensation schedule for the elected position of mayor of the city of Malmell and for other purposes.
If there's no questions or discussion on ordinance number eight sixty-two, it'll be on third reading at the next meeting. We'll move on to the second reading ordinance number eight sixty-three amending a compensation schedule. Mr. Clerk, if you read that by title only?
An ordinance of the city council, the city of Malmell, county of Plaski, state of Arkansas, ordinance number eight sixty-three, an ordinance amending the salary for the position of Malmell city clerk treasurer and for other purposes.
If there's no discussion on that item, it'll also be on third reading at the next meeting. Next item is the city attorney opinion on consolidated billing agreement with Malmell Water Management. And you have a copy of a memorandum that was prepared by Madam City Attorney that outlines, uh, several AG's opinions, and so I will let her, uh, address this item.
It's fairly lengthy, so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Alderman Lewis?
Was, um, as it relates to just the sanitation portion, do you feel that that is not in bounds with a consolidated power?
Well, a, as I mentioned, in the, uh, in my opinion, you know, the AG opinion speaks specifically to whether or not a city could demand or require of a, uh, public, you know, public water authority to do that, and said no, very clearly said no. That was not within the context of an interlocal agreement. I think, you know, just from my discussions with Mr. Hankins, I think, you know, I don't think I'm overstating it by saying that he's of the opinion that that wouldn't, that couldn't be accomplished by that, based on that opinion. But that is a diff, a distinction that's not handled in the, uh, opinion, is whether or not an interlocal agreement could overcome those things, because it wouldn't, in that sense, it wouldn't be, whether they were compelled, it would be an agreement to do so.
Right, it's a voluntary.
Right, it would be a contract essentially, and it would have to be approved by the AG. So that would also give another avenue for if there was a problem, the AG at that point could say that. But, uh, you know, I think th, there's no doubt in my mind that that, that's what the AG's opinion says, and from that stands.
And that was, the one thing I noticed is that that word in there compel, cause that came from Tawny Town, where you had the municipality there that wanted the utility to do that for them, but the utility said, "No, thank you."
Exactly.
And so, in this instance, it, you know, based on what we have heard from MWM, there is a willingness to move forward. And so what now is the steps with the task force that we have in place?
Well, I didn't get the sense that MWM wanted to move forward at this point. So, uh, that was part of my discussion, was that Mr. Hankins was, had, was of the opinion that they could not, and that there was at least two of the commissioners who were not interested at this point.
Okay.
So if there wasn't, if there wasn't interest in going forward from MWN, then we would draft an interlocal agreement. Both entities would have to adopt it, and then it would be presented to the AG for consideration.
Sounds good.
And the task force was just to work with Malmell Wa, Water Management on integrating the, the consolidated billing, not necessarily investigating this issue, so that...
It was just a matter of, was it practical from a standpoint of, would our system shake hands with their system? And so, I mean, that was my understanding of the task, cause that was why the, the research was not done at that point, was because if those, if, right, if those, if practically speaking couldn't be accomplished, then the expense and effort to do it, to go through all this, the interlocal agreement, the research, all those things would be, you know, done per, to prematurely, so.
Thank you.
Alderman Ho?
I noticed that in this opinion, you referenced MSID, and I, I was wondering, once they accomplish, uh, the transfer to the PWA, uh, will, will this, this opinion remain the same, or could that change at that point, once they have...
Well, the two AG opinions that are referenced in the opinion, one talks about an improvement district, and the other one talks about a PWA. And so I think, you know, there, there are definitely challenges on both sides of it, but neither of those opinions talk about an interlocal agreement.
Right.
So, um, it, so I don't, from my, I, I wrote this with this, with, without knowing whether it would be an improvement district or a PWA, intending for it to cover both.
And then, uh, I know Alderman Lewis has done some research, uh, with, uh, central Arkansas water. Do we know what makes central Arkansas water different than, than our situation?
Well, central Arkansas water isn't, it's a, an entity created by an interlocal agreement.
Okay.
And so, you know, that's, that's the vehicle.
So that might be something that we could do.
Right, that's the vehicle that you would undertake. I mean, it, what, what I don't believe we would be doing is creating a new entity. I don't think that's the intent of the council, or the, uh, would be, you know, the, the idea behind this, but rather would be, uh, creating a joint undertaking, which, you know, we have, currently, we have interlocal agreements with, uh, Plaski County, with North Little Rock, uh, with Little Rock for, on a number of different things, with one with Chemick Village. So certainly, you know, we, that's something we use frequently, and, uh, there are different provisions that are required in an interlocal agreement that creates a new body like central Arkansas water. So we wouldn't be going to that extent, because we wouldn't have a whole governing body, there wouldn't be a funding mechanism, all those things would not be necessary. So in the sense that it would be using that type of agreement, it would be similar, but it would not be to the extent that central Arkansas water is.
So we don't necessarily have to construe this as an absolute no, we can continue to work.
Well, let me put it this way. You can construe it as a no as to whether or not we can compel Malmell Water Management, in whatever form it is, in to...
Involuntarily.
True, I don't think that was ever our intention to compel.
And I don't think so either, I don't think so either, but I mean, I wanna make sure it's clear that, you know, it, it will have to be truly a joint undertaking with both parties on board, and, in a, in a joint agreement, in a contractual context.
But we're not dead in the water.
I don't think so.
Alderman Mosley?
Uh, yeah, I guess, I guess the question in my mind is, is there, is there any need to even have the task force in place? I think this whole, this whole process was done to try to come up with a mechanism to enforce payment of, of, uh, community service fee and, and the garbage fee by turning off the water. And if that can't be done, is there, is there any reason to, to go forward with the task force?
Again, I, I go back to, I think the analogy was the chicken and egg, and this is, this is one of those issues where, you know, the task force, I think, can answer some valuable questions about whether or not it's practical. But ultimately, but without, you know, once those are answered, if both parties don't agree as to what should be done and how it should be done, in, in order to enter into an interlocal agreement, which may or may not be approved by the Attorney General, it's possible that the Attorney General could say, "No, I find that this is not a permissible interlocal agreement." But, you know, there, there are questions that would be, that could be answered by a task force, whether or not the council thinks those are valuable or not, that's your decision.
But part of the problem is too, we have half of a task force right now, we have the city of Malmell members, but the Malmell Water Management, uh, entity didn't wanna put anybody on that task force until basically this legal opinion was rendered, is my understanding on that.
And I'm gonna assume that they'll want the legal opinion from their council, which may differ.
Okay, well, I'll hold off, I was gonna make a motion to go ahead and maybe disband the task force, but I'll, I'll wait two weeks.
Well, the task force is, is three city employees basically, that, that's there. I mean, you can disband them, but they haven't met, they haven't functioned as a task force, because it was a joint task force between city and Malmell Water Management.
Mayor?
Yes sir.
Remind if I, I'll make a statement?
No sir.
I'm Barry Heller, I'm the general manager of Malmell Water Management. As usual, I believe that we, we got the cart before the horse. I don't think this so, this subject should've come up for another several months, but it did. Now, the, the conception seems to be that, uh, we were, Malmell Water Management Board, where it was approached, to, to see if they would be interested in studying this, this, uh, what would you call it?
Proposal?
Proposal, okay, thank you. That's polite. And, and the, 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 I'm, I'm getting the feeling that, that, that there are some people in here that think that Malmell Water Management was not, uh, in agreement with this and didn't wanna mess with it, didn't wanna talk to you, didn't wanna cooperate with you. And the only thing I wanna tell you tonight is, that's not true. What my board asked for, and I don't always agree with what my board does, but what my board asked for was a formal proposal from the council, uh, to study this. And they, uh, had, aware of the opinion that, that they were approached with, they considered an informal proposal to study this, and they, they want something that's a little more formal. At least I think that's what happened, uh, I'm not really sure. Uh, but I do want to emphasize the fact that, uh, there are some concerns about this proposal. But most of the comments I've heard from my board were, uh, on the positive side. Now, we really, uh, Malmell Water Management really doesn't have a dog in this hunt. We, we don't gain that much by doing this. We lose quite a bit, because all of a sudden we become the bad guys, again. Now, not only do we turn people's water off for not paying their bill, but we turn their water off for not collecting, paying their, their, their trash bill. It makes us a bad guy twice over. Uh, so I'm not crazy about it from that point of view, but from the point of view that would, that it will assist the city and, and be a positive, uh, gesture from, from us to the city, that's what I'm in favor of. And that's what I'm pushing to my board, and for the most part, I think my board looks at it that way. We really don't have anything to gain from this proposal, except for, uh, a better sense of cooperation between us, and that's what we're looking for. If we can help you, I'm pretty sure we're gonna bend over backwards to do whatever we can to help you. And if, and if, uh, making some kind of billing agreement like this between the two of us would help you, it won't hurt us that much. You can't call me much more than what I've already been called, so...
It's already been there?
You know, we'll be, we'll be in favor of it. Now, there are some concerns, yes, and there are some things that need to be looked at. And it's not gonna be something that's gonna be done in one meeting, uh, in one weekend. It's gonna be a lengthy process, but we want to work with you, I'm sure. And I feel confident speaking for my board, in that, that anything you wanna do in this area, we'll push just as hard as you wanna push. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heller. Madam City Attorney, did you...
Um, I, I don't wanna misspeak, I, I was, I was referencing Vaughn Hankins' email where he said, Commissioner Payton that stated that until the, the Board of Commissioners received something in writing from the city as to what it proposed, the BOC could not even consider it. I can also tell you that Commissioner Kearney has expressed to us that he has some concern, he's not, does not want any consideration given to the issue unless he's heard on the matter. And then, that was in August, and then in September, um, Mr. Stuart Hankins said that the Board of Commissioners appear to be taking the position they're not gonna consider this matter unless and until the city makes a formal request by tendering a draft written agreement to the board for its official review. If I were asked at this point, I would have to say the city would have to convince me that such a joint billing is legally permissible and premised upon a threat of termination of water, sewer, sewer service for non-payment of one hundred percent of the joint monthly bill. So if the council wishes for me to go, to, to go to the length of drafting an interlocal agreement for presentation, then I'd be glad to do that. Again, I, I, you know, have tried to stave off the extraordinary efforts, primarily because I, I got the sense that it wasn't being well-received.
You mind if I respond a part of that?
Yes sir.
No, not at all.
Yes, there were some concerns, uh, brought out through emails. Mr. Kearney has several concerns. Mr. Kearney was also, um, and, had a misunderstanding about what we were actually talking about. He wasn't gonna be able to... He wasn't gonna be able to, to be there that night, uh, when the task force was gonna come talk to us and, and when, when the, the discussion was opened. And he went, made it clear that, that, uh, he wanted to be there for that discussion so he didn't want anything decided on. And that's really all he said. Did his emails sound a little bit different? Yes, it did. But I've talked to him. Emails often, uh, faceless phone calls often give people perceptions that aren't actual. Okay? But, and that's all I can say about Mr. Kearney. Um, he's more than open to talk, talk about this anytime that you want to talk. Chairman Kaufman had some concerns. And he still has concerns, but that does not mean that he's not willing to talk about it. That's all. It's, as far as, uh, and if I'm misspeaking, they can fire me tomorrow, I guess, I don't really care one way or the other. But I, I feel confident speaking for my board in saying that they are more than willing to continue to talk about it. And if we have to spend a little money with our attorney, all that will do is put a smile on Stuart's face.
Thank you, Ms. Heller. Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm just kinda, I'm just a regular guy, so I want to try to get these, uh, things straight in my head and, and for anybody that might be in my situation. So what we need to have before anything goes forward is to have a formal interlocal agreement that we need to bring before their board so they can decide whether or not they want to go into a joint project with us in doing... Okay, I'm wrong.
No, that, that, I would agree, that that's the, that's my understanding of the request from Malmel Water Management, is that before they will consider it, they want the city to present a formal written agreement.
Thank, thank you, it's a different thing.
I'm not gonna sit down.
Okay. Because all I'm, what I want to do is, is to put it out there, that I think there's a lot of people on this board that are interested in, in working jointly with Malmel Water. And if we need to bring a joint, um, interlocal agreement to the AG for consideration, I think that's what, that's where we need to go next. So I just wanted to make sure that that's where we are, you know, step by step, so that we don't have the miscommunications that, that were brought up before. Uh, I just, I think if we have a discussion about, a discussion about a discussion, it's gonna get cut, mired down. I think we just need to, you know, kind of put it out there, yes, we want to start to negotiate together or work together to, to form an, an interlocal agreement. And if that's, you know, if that means bringing before their board and, and asking them if they want to get into an, an agreement together, then I think that's what we need to try to do. But I'm just trying to make sure that that's the next step that we need to have, is the interlocal agreement, right? Correct? Before we can move any, go any further.
The prob, here, here's my only, here's one of my concerns. Not my only concern, but here's my, one of my concerns, is that the detail, I mean, the only thing I can draft is a very general interlocal agreement.
Right, we don't have any details.
We don't have any details because we don't know if it prac, from a practical standpoint, will work. So I can draft a shell interlocal agreement that won't have those details in it. Because the task force, or who, anyone.
Right.
No one's worked out those details or discussed it. Um, I can draft it and I'll be happy to present it to, uh, Mr. Hankins to, for presentation to his, for, to his board and, and for any research, you know, that he is authorized to do on, on that. Be happy to do, I just need the permission of the council to undertake that process because it's not a short, simple process.
Right. And my worry is that getting the cart before the horse kind of thing. We need to, to, to figure out if it's something that's feasible before we spend the time and energy on it. But also, I guess we want to make sure that we have the handshake with, um, Malmel Water Management, too. So it's kind of like, who, who moves first? And, and I feel like, you know, with the past discussions that we've had and, uh, with this council, that a lot of us are in agreement to kind of move and explore that idea. Now, we'll, of course, have to agree together, but, um, I just wanted to make sure that they understand that we are, that, 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 I think we're interested in something like that. Uh, at, at least I am. And I, and I just wanted to put that out there. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Do you mind if I respond?
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm in the same boat as Alderman Anderson is. Uh, I'm, I'm just a normal guy.
Perfect timing.
Mary? Before, and, and, uh... City Attorney Davis and, 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 uh, Mr. Hankins know a lot more about this than I do. But it would seem to me that before we worry about writing an agreement, uh, we need to sit down together and have a discussion about whether we want an agreement. And, and the concerns on each side, uh, about that agreement. And then, once you get past that point, then you do the research to see if that kind of agreement is even legal. And I'm, I'm, I'm really probably stepping it right now.
Well, with, with all due respect, that's what the ta, that's why I didn't do this research initially, because that's what the task force was for. And I was told that that, that wasn't gonna be accomplished, so I needed to go ahead and do the research and present. I mean, if I'm misunderstanding the direction I'm getting from your attorney...
You're, you're, you're not misunderstanding. I, I, the, and I'll take most of the blame for this. I think the, most of the confusion, uh, came from our end. If, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Kearney had been able to be there last week, it would have been a lot better. I think the, the, the results would have been a lot different. But I think the, the, everybody kept, went away with the feeling that, that they were told that we didn't want to talk about it. Well, that's really not what they said. They said they didn't want to talk about it tonight because, uh, Mr. Kearney's not there.
And I, I don't, I wasn't aware of the meeting last week. The, the information I got from, was back in, was, was September 16th is the date on the email from Stuart, so...
It was last month, board.
Okay, okay.
Oh, Lord.
Well, I think, I mean, I think suffice it to say, and, and I, I'm in no better position than you. I'm, I'm only here to, to report what I've been given, uh, the task for which I've been given, which I've given you in my memo. And, um, all I need from the council is direction.
Then please, uh, let me, let me state one, one statement before this continues any further. Uh, I, I made a couple of statements tonight. Made a couple of cracks at Mary. Some people in the audience have told me to tell her to be nice. Uh, I want everybody to understand that we're playing. We have a very cordial, uh, working relationship, and I'm not being serious, I'm just...
You're not being serious?
Aggravating her. And she's aggravating me.
We did, we did. Uh, I, you know, I'm speaking as one of the commissioners, and I will tell you what my intent was. Mayor was there, I believe, some of you were there. I know, I know a lot of you were there.
Mayor Alderman Hoag, Alderman, uh, Johnson, Alderman Lewis.
The, the intent was...
Alderman Anderson, Alderman Kelly.
Bunch of you, bunch of you. The intent was this. We've heard this word unilateral around here a lot. And my intention in making that request was to have some assurance that before any of us went off spending a lot of time and money, that the council was in agreement, that they wanted all of us to proceed with this. I, 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 I wasn't liking what I was hearing, you know, ancillary stuff about MWN can't be trusted with our money and duh, duh, duh. I, I, I know, I, I don't care about all that. I'm just saying to you that we just wanted an agreement from the council that said, let's proceed with investigating this. I am not, I don't believe we are at a point yet of spending a whole lot of money on a, on any kind of a proposal. Let's just hold hands and say, yes, this is what we want to do. And I think that's what everyone wants, is let's agree that we're gonna move forward with this. And that it's not a unilateral decision by some of you. Let's make sure that everyone, well, that the majority of the people on the council are in favor of this, and then let's move forward with it. I don't think there's a commissioner at all who's saying, no, we don't want to do this. And, and, you know, if you got that opinion from Stuart, uh, you know, lawyers kind of do this posturing thing sometimes, as you well know. And I'm not sure what he was doing. But I will tell you that that was my intent. So, now you're done. Are you requesting an, an action in addition to the resolution? Uh, i- if I remember, the resolution only pertained to the city forming a task force.
And working with MWN.
It says, actually, section one says the city council, the City of Malmel wishes to seek a common effort with Malmel Water Management so that the parties may consider entering into a consolidated, consolidated billing agreement. I should've read it. So, I mean, I, you know, I'd be happy to draft something additional for the council to consider if that's necessary. Whatever the council, whatever we're looking for. And, and, and your vote was what? Let me guess. Okay, all right.
It was a majority vote.
Is that good enough for you? It's good enough for me?
Good.
Good, thank you.
That's all we needed, thank you.
I do agree that, uh, in my opinion, the, the, that the council gave my commission exactly what we asked for. And through some misunderstanding and some, uh, absence, absences that night, uh, everybody went away confused. I know I did. And for that, I apologize.
Thank you, Ms. Heller. Alderman Lewis?
Couple of questions, but first I do want to put this on the table. I think some of that confusion is probably well-understood right now considering that the commissioners are undergoing a very, uh, difficult effort, if you will, with this PWA transition, so...
Complicated and convoluted.
Complicated at best, yes. And so, and there's also, you know, having been at the last meeting, there are maintenance and upgrade situations that, you know, your department is undertaking, so it, I think if anything, the miscommunication is just a matter of, you know, it's, uh, probably bad timing on some of the parts and, like you said, some absences. Two questions that I do have from Madam City Attorney. At this point, what details, because you, we, I think you're correct, I think it would be unwise to draft something that's very empty at this point. So what details broadly do you require?
Whether, you know, how the process would, for instance, who would be responsible for sending out bills? Who would be responsible? How would the, that, that be collected? How would the, the funds be distributed? Um, you know, those sorts of things. How would there be an outside billing agency contacted? Would it be done internally for one agency or the other? Just the details, how the money would be, uh, handled and applied.
Okay. And in your opinion, would it be good to go ahead and draft an empty agreement or go ahead and work out those details first and make that part of the agreement? Which one would be better?
From my experience with interlocal agreements generally, when we present them to the council, they're complete agreement.
Okay.
So, uh, for instance, the last one we came with was an automatic aid agreement with North Little Rock. It had in it the details of what, how the aid would be provided. Because otherwise, if I come to you with an empty agreement, we'll then be waiting to go back and put the details in, then I'll come back to you with another agreement. And quite frankly, um, it won't be me coming back to you with another agreement because that can't happen in the amount of time that I have left in this position. That many times back and forth.
And finally, once there is an interlocal agreement with details that are provided, typically based on past interlocal agreements, what sort of timeframe until the AG makes a ruling on it?
Uh, the AG has, under the statute, has, I believe, 60 days to, to rule on it. If, if they don't rule on it within 60 days, it's automatically, um, affirmed.
Okay. All right.
I'm very confused. I came down here to learn something, I don't want to go home.
Sir, you're gonna have to come to the microphone and state your name, but...
It sounds like, uh, my name is Al Wright. I live at 153 Ridgeland Drive. I've been here, going on 15 years. I moved in here believing that we had to pay a community service fee. I have never failed to pay a community service fee. Only recently have I learned that some people, it's an optional thing. They don't pay if they don't want to. So I kind of got teed off. In fact, I really got teed off. And I came down here tonight to find out, so, and all I hear is, well, we're gonna take more time to study this, and we're gonna decide whether we will move forward. Well, who in the hell's gonna get the money? Who's gonna start paying the community service fee? And why not?
Well, it is not optional. They, they're, they are required to pay it, but...
Well, obviously it is, they are not paying, and who's...
Well, we turn them over to collection agencies, we, but we don't have as, what we've been working through tonight is a way to shut off a service for sanitation. Now, the community service fee will not be, well, it depends. The community service fee's not even addressed in these AG's opinions, so that's a totally different animal. But it's, it's, it's a legal issue as whether it can be tied to the water being shut off.
I just sent my last check to you personally.
Yes, sir, I got your check. Yes, sir.
Now, can I just not send any more checks?
Uh, and we will have a collection agency contact you, we will continue to contact you. Also, you incur late fees also, yes, sir.
How much will the, uh, uh, collection agency, how, what will their fee be to collect the bill?
It, it, it depends.
It depends on how much?
Size of the bill and how many late fees are involved.
Well, you know, how much money is laying out there that not been collected?
I don't have a number to, tonight, sir.
Obviously, we're not gonna get a number.
Well, yes, sir, we are, but, I mean, I can have you a number. But it's, we've collected 169, 159,000 late fees at the last report, or past dues and late fees.
If, I may, just to finish up.
Okay.
I may, just to finish up. Um, I think we've got this task force in place. I think working on these details is important. That's where we should move forward. Uh, you know, there's just been some miscommunication here. We've sort of tiptoed through the tulips, but I think there is mostly a willingness here to move forward. Let's work out those details in the next few months so we can get a solution to this. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir, I mean, this is, this is really getting out of order, but we, since we started, I'm gonna let it go, but the, the council, I mean, is trying to conduct business here. Yes, sir.
I'm, and I'll, John Chapman, 44 Washita Drive, I never rise to speak. You know, I've been transferred to eight municipalities and I've never seen a discussion like this. Every other municipality that I've ever known of simply puts this fee into the taxing structure. I've never written a check for a community service fee in my life till I moved to Malmel. I understand the money has to be done through a service fee or through a taxation or whatever. If this council would address that issue, and I know that's been debated for years, this discussion is just ridiculous, in my opinion, that we're going back and forth. You put it into a taxing structure, you've got an automatic collection process there, right? You don't pay your taxes, you lose whatever. So to me, if this council would look at, uh, addressing the community service fee one more time versus a taxing structure, you could put all this to rest.
If you look at the Attorney General's opinion regarding the community service fee, it cannot be placed on real estate property tax. So it's not a property tax. And there's an AG's opinion to that, so, uh, you know, our hands are kind of tied on that also.
Well, I understand, I just don't know why in every other municipality, this is just a part of the tax, you don't pay a separate fee, and yet you have police service and garbage service. So I just, I don't understand how other municipalities don't charge a fee.
We're the only city in the state of Arkansas that charges that fee, and it was put in place basically because we were a POA, basically. Malmel started as a property owner's association, homeowners' association, and the, uh, the, there was a vote taken in 1985 by the citizens of Malmel to cha, charge themselves based on occupancy, which is not a real estate, it's based on the occupants of the house. And so therefore, the, the Attorney General, they, they were taken to court over that, and, and it was actually not an AG's opinion, it was Supreme Court, Supreme Court ruling. And it's, it's in the pack... And it's in the packet tonight. But it cannot be tied to it, because the argument was, they were already paying five meals in taxes, and therefore, if you charged this as a tax as part of the real estate, it would have been an additional meals above the five meals, which is illegal exaction. So, I mean, I don't know that there's a way to add that. You can eliminate the community service fee, that's been tried, it's been phased out, but, I mean, it's still, you're going to lose that amount of revenue. Alderman Ho?
Well, probably what I was going to say has been addressed, but I'm going to say it anyway. I think that we need to move forward with the task force, so that we can work out the conditions of an interlocutory decree. That just seems to me like the most, the logical thing to do, and I hope that's what we're going to do. It sounds to me like we have gotten a lot of the miscommunication out of the way, and we're certainly interested in working with Maumell Water, and I believe that Maumell Water is interested in working with us, and that's in itself a very positive thing.
Thank you very much. Alderman Mosley?
Yes. Let me go down here to conclusions here, and City Attorney Davis's memo here, it says, "I am confident that an interlocal agreement could be reached for the parties to collect jointly, but the enforcement mechanism, the termination of services, appears unlikely under the, above precedent."
I see no reason, I really see no reason to even proceed, because that was the whole point of why the council voted, was to try to come up with a mechanism to terminate services, to enforce payment of this. If that can't be done, all we're gaining is somebody else billing for us. Why go forward? Seriously.
Well, but if you keep reading on the next sentence, it says, "And an interlocal agreement would have to be approved by the Attorney General, but that is done only after it's executed by the parties." I mean, if the Attorney General ruled that it was possible, then it could move forward for collection. Is that correct, Madam City Attorney?
But you have doubts that the Attorney General will approve that, is that correct?
Well, in terms of, you know, terminating services, and also, we're talking about an issue where the question was phrased in its context of, could you unilaterally compel the, I think Ms. Peyton used that word, could you compel that? And the AG has said, "No." So, in that context, no. I mean, without the interlocal agreement in place, though, without it being, the parties agreeing in terms of what the billing details would be, how they would be enforced, particularly how the money would be applied. Because if, for instance, there is no, you know, if the agreement is such that 100%, of the water portion of the bill is paid first from any monies received, then it will always be terminating one service for non-payment of another. But if the parties can agree to a distribution structure whereby monies received will be distributed in equal fashion, and unpaid money, then the water bill will be unpaid, and it'll be a termination because the water bill's unpaid. Does that make sense?
Yes, I understand.
Okay. But that's going to require details set forth in an interlocal agreement, and the parties reaching an agreement as to the distribution of those monies once they're received.
Okay. But the Attorney General could say that that is not possible?
You know, I've said it before, if you put three lawyers in a room, and you very well can get three different opinions. So, whether, Mr. Hankins and I may agree that it's possible, and the AG is tasked with the authority to say, "No, it's not." So, I couldn't begin to say what they would say, but I think based on the precedent of an interlocal agreement, and the, you know, the legislation for these kind of interlocal agreements was passed after these AG opinions were requested. So, I think there's a very strong chance that that will address the concerns in the AG's opinions that are attached to this memo.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Mosley. Alderman Johnson?
Well, my opinion on this is very simple. I think we're asking them to help us. We got the problem. We're asking them to help us. Now, I offered to you a solution that coincides with this gentleman over here, what he said. All we got to do is increase our sales tax by 1%, eliminate the community service fee, eliminate the other. But we're working hard to say, "Okay, we don't want to do that." Now, I think we ought to be accepting them, because we're asking something of them. They're going to save us $150,000 a month, and we're asking something of them. So, either work with them, and hey, I want to hold hands with the water company. I know a lot of us do. But by the same token, if we don't want that, we can go get a 1% sales tax, and it's all gone. Now, the objection that I heard for the 1% sales tax, we wouldn't have to collect any money, wouldn't have to do anything, it'd be right built in. The only thing there is, if we ever need something else, it's gone. I mean, we've already used that 1%, and I think the mayor expressed that. You know, once we use it, it's going to be hard to go get enough. Plus, we also got to get the people to vote for it. And that's going to not be easy. But we're asking the favor of the Maumell Water Management. We're trying to put something together, but hey, if we want to stop all of it, we can turn around and just put in a sales tax, or try to get a sales tax in, and eliminate the whole problem. That ties in with what he said. My opinion.
Thank you, Alderman Johnson. Alderman Norris?
Yes. It's been lit for an hour now. I think it's time that we revisit the idea of eliminating the community service fee, so I'll throw something out in ordinance, and we can talk about it, and thumbs up or thumbs down again. Mr. Mayor, with regards to the solid waste, the delinquent solid waste fees, are there any plans to enter those on to the tax records of the county?
Yes, sir, in November of this year.
Okay. And so, all of the fees that are 90 days, delinquent and more, will be passed over and actually attached to property taxes?
That's correct, if this council takes that action. The council has to vote on that action to put it on a lien, and you can go, anything that's 90 days in rear, up two, three years back, because of the statute of limitations. And so, the second meeting in November, that's the plan right now, to ask this council to do that. For solid waste fees only. It cannot apply to the community service fees.
Also, I noticed in the section on solid waste fees, we have words, actually misdemeanor to not pay those. Is that possible to put on the community service fee, something similar like that?
That's part of the state statute. I mean, we have had very poor luck collecting those as misdemeanor fines. We've tried that before, citations were issued, and that's up to the council. So, you're suggesting amending the community service fee so that non-payment would be a criminal act?
Yes, like we have for the solid waste. I know the community service fee doesn't really exist anywhere else, so it's hard to find precedent on that.
The solid waste, that's not our code that that exists, that's the state statute.
Okay, it's also in section 62-34 of the city code.
Right, it's based on the state statute.
Okay, okay.
In chapter, so, chapter eight.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the points have been made, and we're back on track with Maumell Water Management. That's what the whole, that's what the resolution was for, was to enact a task force to work closely with them to see if this was even feasible. That's it. So, now that those points have been made, let's just move on. Thank you.
I have no more lights on this item, so I assume we're done with it. If we are, we'll move on to the first item under new business, which is the first reading ordinance, number 864, concerning entering the waters at a certain city park. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only, at certain city parks.
The ordinance of the City Council, the City of Maumell, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 864, an ordinance amending provisions concerning entering the waters at certain city parks in the city of Maumell and for other purposes.
Okay, this came about because of a request by a group that wanted to use Lake Willistine for a function called the Polar Bear Plunge. It raises funds for Special Olympics, and basically, they wait till it gets really, really cold, and then they run into the water. And as a fundraiser. And what we also realized in reviewing this, when we had the cardboard boat race at Lake Willistine, also, we had people that were wading in the water to help the boats get in the water, and then assist them out, and then we also had a few people that sank, for lack of a better word. So, they were swimming in Lake Willistine after they had been floating in Lake Willistine. And so, this is to try to correct that issue, and basically, it just says that this section shall not apply to persons who may briefly wade into or otherwise enter the waters of Lake Willistine or Lake Valencia as a part of either their employment with or contractual obligations to the city of Maumell, or to those special events which are sponsored by, or approved in writing by the city of Maumell. And so, it's addressing those issues. Madam City Attorney has prepared this, and I know that all of you received an email this afternoon that said, "An emergency exception might be added to the proposed ordinance to allow one or more individuals entry into said waters to safeguard against death or injury of either human or animal." I do think that our, I don't think that we would cite somebody that had jumped into the water to rescue a person or an animal. So, I don't know that that's necessary, but it was suggested by a citizen, and if you want that a part of it, it could be made a part of it, but I don't think that that's necessary. I think our law enforcement officers and our code enforcement officers are pretty reasonable people, and I don't think they would cite somebody for rescuing somebody, but...
Mr. Mayor, would that be, or Madam City Attorney, would that be a significant change and put it back on first reading? Have we added that?
Okay, and so, you're welcome to think about that, then, at the, you know, bring it up at the next meeting, and this ordinance will be on second reading. And there's, we don't have a timeframe problem, is that correct, Madam City Attorney, with the event?
No, I don't think so. I think that the proposed event is in December, I believe, December or January, and...
December 4th?
December 4th, okay. And I do want to point out that in my tenure, we've never prosecuted any one of these, including for the cardboard boat races, but, you know, generally speaking, it's nicer to clean up rather than to say, "We're just going to look the other way." We don't want to create that kind of situation. But with, we do have a provision allowing boats on the Lake Willistine up to a certain, the motor has to be a certain size. So, that was the intention under the cardboard boat race. And I think, you know, as that develops into a more accepted event, you know, we'll have, I think, probably, expectations were established more so by this event. I didn't really, honestly, I don't think anybody thought about people wading in or swimming with the cardboard boats, because they would technically be in the boats. But I think this helps us to cover those grounds and not have any problems for either one of those events in the future.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll move on to the next item. Resolution 2014-41, amending the 2014 general fund budget. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Resolution of the City Council, the City of Maumell, Pulaski County, Arkansas, Resolution number 2014-41, a resolution to amend the 2014 general fund budget.
Okay. This has come about because that we've hired multiple cleaning services over the past several years and not been getting satisfactory service. And so, this time, the city would like to move forward with hiring part-time employees to do our cleaning service within four buildings within the city of Maumell, which would be City Hall, Senior Wellness, Public Works, and the Police Department. So, this is not asking for an increase. This is basically asking for a transfer of funds that are in one line item into another line item, which is not required council approval to do that. But the situation is, is we would be adding two employees, and so, we did not want to do that without bringing this to the council, because basically, then, you're going to see it in the budget process, too, that we, well, you added two employees, when did that occur? And so, that was the main thing, just to keep the council up in a breast. And Clerk Clausen, and Mr. Stowe, and Mr. James have worked on developing this process to try to move forward on it, and they could answer any questions if they're all still here. Alderman Lewis?
You indeed may have answered this question, and if they are here, they're welcome to answer it as well. So, these will be new hires and not current employees, which will be taking on new roles. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
And work 20 to 25 hours is what we anticipate right now. And hire two, because to cover, if somebody's off or something like that, we still, the building would still get cleaned that night. If you hired one, but that person couldn't come in, then there's a problem with that. And so, that's the thoughts behind two part-time employees also. And we don't anticipate it costing anymore. Then, you see the line item there, the current budgets and all, I mean, even when you see the full budget, you're not going to see an increase because of those employees. It was a cleaning service that we were paying a fee to, anyway, and they would just become part-time employees.
I make a motion, we approve, Resolution 2014-41.
Second.
We have a motion as second to approve Resolution 2014-41. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all is in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is Resolution number 2014-42, certifying rates of taxation for 2014. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Resolution number 2014-42, a resolution certifying to the Pulaski County, Arkansas County Clerk, that doesn't look right, a resolution certifying to the Pulaski County Clerk, County Clerk.
Pulaski County, Arkansas.
Okay. Should have just read it. A resolution certifying to the Pulaski County, Arkansas County Clerk, the rates of taxation to be levied by the City of Maumell on taxable real and personal property within the city of Maumell, Arkansas, for the tax year 2014 and for other purposes.
Okay, this is something that's required of the council to do every year. There is no increase. This is exactly the rate that it has been since at least 2005, based on the data here. But it's the same rate, it's just that this council has to certify it, and then we have to forward that to Pulaski County, so that it can be assessed for the next year.
I move that we adopt Resolution number 2014-42.
It's been motion second that the council adopt Resolution number 2014-42. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all is in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Next item is Mayor's comments, and first item is a typo. It is actually Lake Valencia fountain purchase. We're not putting a fountain on Lake Willistine, or we have no plans to, and I heard friends of Lake Willistine were interested in that.
Their hopes up.
But it is, as everybody knows, and we have citizens in the audience that call it the Maumell Icon, but it's been non-functioning because of a burned-out motor. But Mr. Rayburn is here tonight, but what they have done is, due to the extremely mild and wet summer that we had, they did not use irrigation. And Maumell Water Management probably doesn't like to hear that, but they didn't use irrigation at our sports fields. And so, there are funds available to purchase the fountain and get it installed this year, within this year's budget. And so, we're just letting you know that we're doing that, and that's where the funds became available at, were through the irrigation, which is kind of interesting that, you know, we're going to spray water back into a lake, but that's, you know, we're using irrigation, savings on irrigation water to do that. So, that's what we're doing, and I think Mr. Rayburn's hiding in the corner back there.
Yeah.
Okay. If you have any questions for him. But it's also going to have lights on it, LED lights, so that it'll be visible at night. Originally, there was one that had lights on it, but I think they'd gone malfunction, they'd non-functioning years ago, but, so that's where we're at on that.
Time frame?
What's the timeframe? Do you know a timeframe, Mr. Rayburn?
I've got the DL signed and through, so I just got to get it to a place. I'll have a time frame when we get it.
As soon as they can get it in and get it in. As soon as I can get it in and get it installed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This year.
This year.
Yeah, I mean, it was a big deal during our budget meeting, so I know this is, everybody's going to be excited.
Yeah, and that, you know, that's what we, that's what we said during the budget meeting, is they took, the Parks and Rec took it out of their budget because there was other items that they needed, but they were going to try to find a way to, to do it during this year, and that's what we've been able to do. Uh, just to give you an update on the Edgewood Drive overlay project, bids were taken September the 17th by the Arkansas Highway Department, and they awarded that contract, uh, the 23rd, I believe, of, of September to Cranford Construction. And, uh, it's a contract to do work in Cabot and Malmel. That's the city street aid fund that, that we have. And so, $250,000 of the dollars will come out of the city straight, street aid for Malmel and 250 for Cabot, and then we paid an extra $99,000, uh, to cover the cost of the project. The project will do all of Edgewood Drive. We see all the patches that have been made. It'll, it'll, it'll do all of Edgewood Drive, and then it will do Millwood Drive from Edgewood up to Naylor, and it will do the overlay on that. And the construction is set to begin within the next two to four weeks with completion planned by the end of the year. It is, is what the information that we got from the highway department. And then, another item, uh, Ms. Courtney Dunn, uh, who's my administrative assistant, she applied for, and we were selected as winners of the 2014 Arkansas Business City of Distinction in the Green and Energy Conservation Initiatives category for cities with population of 5,000 to 20,000. And that was basically our, uh, single-stream recycling program that we rolled out this year, uh, and then along with some of our other recycling that we do at our recycling and transfer station. And so, those awards would be presented at the winter meeting of the Arkansas Municipal League. So, in January, the city will receive those awards, uh, or that award. And, uh, so if you were there in the past, you know that they give them out for various categories, uh, and they base it on the population of the cities. Uh, just to give you another update, uh, Alderman Mosley had asked for a task list, uh, on the pro, on the, the interchange project, and that was at your desk when you came in tonight. Uh, and if you remember my memo, I told you we were at step 39, and we're at step 39 and 41 is where we're at right now on that. So, it's the Conduct Cultural Resources Field Surveys, and then the Draft Fonzie. A Fonzie is a finding of no significant impact, is what that stands for. Uh, but that's where we're at on that project. And then also, I'd given you an update, uh, on the curbside recycling weekly totals. I can't make sense out of it. I'm sorry. Uh, it's just the way it is. So, uh, you just look at it, I, you know, people seem to do it every other week, but then it, that doesn't hold true either. But you do see there's a pretty good upswing here in the last few weeks, so.
What is the measurement here with the number?
Tonnage. I'm sorry, tonnage.
That's okay. Thank you.
What, uh, going back to the, um, I-40 interchange task list, you said we were in 39 and 41?
Yes.
And then are 1 through 38 completed?
Yes.
And 40, number 40?
40 is, well, you got to complete 40 to get, or you got to complete 39 to get 40 done. So, it's, those are in the process. Just like if you see 41, and those can go on at the same time. You have to, you know, 41 would be done, but 42 and 43 would be their approval of that. So, it's, you know, it, they don't all follow an exact, like, you don't have to do step 39 to, to go move on to 40. So, yeah.
It was just a checklist, and I wanted to mentally check.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so I'm sorry. But yes, everything above, well, everything is, yeah, everything has been done, except in, if you look at 35, it says approval of preferred alternative. I mentioned to you the last time that we had changed that alternative, so it's not, the new one's not approved, but that's part of what the, the cultural resource is doing also, so, on the preferred alternative. Okay. The, uh, the next item is, uh, and it, I covered it a little bit earlier, but I did get a report from, uh, ETC tonight at 4:49 actually, uh, on the drainage on, uh, the, the Gables area, and that's the north end ditch up there. And it's very preliminary. I haven't had the chance to even discuss it with them, uh, but it, that they have said that it appears that there, we need to enlarge the pipes. The problem is, if we bore the pipes, you're limited to the size pipe you can bore. So, I mean, you, I don't know that you can bore a 10-foot pipe, 10-foot diameter pipe. So, you might have to bore a 60-inch pipe. So, so you might have to put additional pipes, you know, as to, to equal a 10-foot pipe. If it takes three 10-foot pipes, it may take 10 60-inch pipes. So, you know, the equivalency is there. But that, so we've got to do a lot more detailed work to determine exactly how that can be done. We've got to work with the railroad. Is the best thing to do, shut down the, the spur track for a couple of days, take it up, do it that way? Is that the, the most cost, cost-effective way to do it? You know, so there, there's all kinds of details, because these go under the spur track. And so, it, it's going to be an issue. Uh, and I'll, hopefully, we'll, we'll get an update on Wednesday, and then also, I hope to get an update on the Barber Drive drainage study on Wednesday also. Uh, they are working on the design on that.
Bill?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
You're only for a week?
Well, I, they, they've also been working on this study. They're, they've got limited resources also, and so, they've been working on both studies, so.
So, then it hasn't gone to bid process?
It has not gone to bid process. No, ma'am. I mean, you would see an advertisement if it'd gone to bid process. So... Alderman Mosley? I'm sorry, I didn't see your light on.
That's all right. It concerns something. You went ahead and answered the question for me, so that's fine.
Okay, all right. Okay. Next item is the Planning Commission Report. Alderman Hoag?
Well, um, there were only a couple of different items on there, but for David's Burger, there was a proposed site plan, a landscape plan, and a commercial building design, all of which were approved. There was, uh, some discussion about a variance, and it had to do with parking spaces, and I believe that they approved that variance as well.
Yes, ma'am.
And then...
It was a, it was a landscape buffer in the parking lot areas, what it was, and they reached a compromise on that.
So, apparently, we're full speed ahead with David's Burger. And then there was a request, um, for rezoning, uh, from the gentleman who owns the property adjacent to Park on the River, whose name I wouldn't even begin to try to say. Anyway, they, that was not approved, and I assume that will be coming to the council at the next meeting.
Actually, it was, it would typically, you know, any rezoning request or change in the land use has to be approved by the council. So, um, the vote of the commission, just for, by way of background, is to recommend or not recommend to the council what to do or not to do. Um, and after it was the, it was a unanimous vote not to recommend that change to the council, the applicant withdrew the application, so it won't be coming to the council.
Okay. And then there was a, uh, master street plan discussion. I think they will be voting on that at the next meeting, and that was it.
Okay. Alderman's comments?
Think we're throwing in the towel.
Sounds like it. Madam City Attorney?
Yes.
Mr. City Clerk? Okay. We have no other business, uh, before the council. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion second to adjourn. All is in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Say no. Meeting is adjourned. Wow.
I'm going to miss this reality.
Man, I too.
Liar, liar.
Nose is growing.
You can always watch them online, or, you know, the next day.